Good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, the 13th, December 13th, and our last meeting of this year. So we welcome you here. And with that, Dee, would you please call roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, cold spell is expected to hit yet colder than what we're having right now, just to make sure it's very clear, sometime next week. So it's good reminder just for everyone to check their supplies and also reminder to check on friends and family too, especially the elderly who might need an extra hand. So do you Pullman, as you probably may have read in the news, that recently received a half million dollar TIB grant to help fund resurfacing of Bishop Boulevard, Main Street, Fairmont Drive, construction set to begin in the summer of 2023. It's been a pleasure. I've served on the TIB board since about 2016, I think, and currently is chair, and it's just good to see that money coming back to Pullman too. We don't, we can't advocate, but we can talk about the whole program and we can certainly be there and present, things like that. Tico got some money this year, Colfax got some money, some other cities in Whitman County, Uniontown, I think, got a little bit of money too. There's still time to give your feedback to Pullman's Housing Action Plan Survey. Your thoughts help the staff understand the community housing needs and the wants, and you can look close at gaps and offer greater access to quality housing. You can search the phrase Housing Action Plan on our website and find more information. Pullman Small Businesses, nonprofits can apply now for a simple low-interest loan supported by the Washington Department of Commerce. It's called the Small Business Plex Fund. Interested parties can visit smallbusinessplexfund.org or reach out to our economics development director, Jennifer Hackman. Businesses and property owners in the downtown core are invited to a construction preparation meeting that starts tomorrow, the 14th, at noon, right here in the council chambers. Welch Comer, the consultant for Project Downtown Pullman, the city staff will be on hand with information, tools, resources to assist the community in their planning. If you're still looking for gift ideas, how about a Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center annual membership? Purchase the end of December and you'll save, if you do it before then, you'll save 20%. As a member, you'll enjoy a 25% discount at all aquatic center and Rainy Park Pool programs. And if you're looking for gift ideas to help others, there's always Care to Share at the Aquatic Center and Pullman Recreation. You can help some that are trying to find money to help their kids get to some recreation programs, Care to Share programs, really good. Speaking of great gifts, remember Parks and Rec Winter Spring Activity Guide will be available on our website starting tomorrow. Classes fill up fast, so hop online. Register as early as midnight on Monday, December 19th. And those are the announcements tonight. Next up on our agenda is confirmation of appointment. Our first item is for appointment of Steve Sebel to the Planning Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2026. Bob Olson, who served us for six years in the Planning Commission, did an excellent job, was an associate dean in the College of Engineering, actually recruited Steve because he knew he was going to be stepping down after six years of service. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to confirm that appointment.
So move?
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is a motion to confirm the appointment of members to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. And let me tell you, in the 19 years I've been mayor here, this was probably one of the most difficult committees, just because we had such quality candidates. And so I went through, trying to make sure that all different segments were covered. So I'm recommending to you, for a one-year term, Ethan Ramos, Rocky Lucas, and Libby Walker for one year. Two-year Lisa Guerrero and Julian Matthews. For three years, Terry Buffington and Juan Garcia. And I sent notices out today to those who I didn't pick and asked them if they'd like to serve on other committees and make sure that they have their applications. What I did is, after I picked these, I sent emails out to every one of them and said, okay, I know it's been a while, would you still want to serve? Because I knew I had quality people in the other pack. So every one of them said, yes, I'm willing to do that and would like to serve. So at this time, I entertain a motion to confirm those appointments.
Motion to confirm the appointments of members to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And right now, we're looking for the Resilience and Environmental Committee. We've got so far about three applications, and I'm going to have one from Pullman High School, and they have elected their person in their environmental committee, and they're going to be sending that nomination off. So just as you, again, we're going to take applications generally through the end of this year, and we hope that we can fill that group as well. And if not, we'll just continue to ask for more members. So with that, our next item is a public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to make any public comment on any final action the council may take tonight? Seeing none, we now close the public comment period. Consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature. Councils looked at these ahead of time. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So move?
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Thad O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. The first item on the consent agenda is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of November 29, 2022, and approve them as submitted. The second item is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 108657 through 108667, electronic transfers 87, 88, and 940 through 944, payroll direct deposits numbered 81148 through 81491, and to void check 108325 and replace with check number 108657 totaling $1,8,945.18. The third item is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 108668 through 108732 totaling $313,549.05. Fourth item, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 108733 totaling $28.20. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 108734 through 108792 totaling $1,473,169.44. Number six, a motion to renew the contract with O'Sullivan Legal, P L L C, to provide legal assistance and advise the city of Pullman for the year 2023. Item seven is a motion to authorize execution of renewal licenses with CDW-G state contract pricing for Microsoft Assurance. Item eight, a motion authorizing an amendment to extend the contract one year with GMV Innovating Solutions, formerly Chromatics Corporation, to provide Pullman Transit's fixed route AVL GPS system. Item nine is a motion to accept the bid from Coleman Oil LLC to furnish the city of Pullman's fuel for the year 2023. Item 10, resolution number R-71-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number one to a water quality combined financial assistance agreement between the city of Pullman and the Washington State Department of Ecology for the Decant Facility Project. Item 11, resolution number R-72-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of a fuel tax grant agreement between the city of Pullman and the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board for the Bishop Boulevard overlay Fairmont Drive to W-O-S-R-270 project. And the final item, item 12, resolution number R-73-22, a resolution declaring certain accounts receivable due to the city of Pullman to be bad debts and removing said accounts from the active accounting records of the city.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion?
Number 12, please.
Six.
Six and 12. Any others? Okay. Then the consent agenda consists of items one through five, seven through 11. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to item number 12. Eileen.
This, this item, this is a really, this is a bright spot. Our finance department and under Mike's direction and before that, some other directors as well, we used to have a whopping category of this. The fact that there are no ambulance billings on this is just, I mean, that ambulance billing used to be in the hundreds of thousands. And we've got that sorted out, so the ratepayers and the taxpayers of our community should be really, really pleased to see this really, really small number. Good job to all those that have worked on this. I know some of it's been down and dirty and in the trenches, but boy, this looks great. Thank you so much.
And with that, would you like to make a motion to approve it?
A motion to approve, item number 12.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Pat, number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to recognize Thad and his willingness to step forward in September, October timeframe in our relocation of Laura McAlune. And you've done an awesome job stepping into the fray, Thad, and I appreciate your being here and thanks for continuing on to next year.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Of course, you're welcome.
And then would you like to make a motion on number six?
Move to renew the contract with O'Sullivan Legal, P L L C, to provide legal assistance and advice to the city of Pullman for the year 2023.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we leave the consent agenda. We move now to the regular agenda. First is an ordinance creating Pullman City Code Section 17.0106, Planned Unit Developments. RJ Lot.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Happy holidays to everybody. This is a ordinance for Pullman City Code Section 17.106, which is a new code section for planned unit developments. You may recall, back on May 3rd of this year, I did a brief presentation to the city council on what exactly a planned unit development is, how we would process it, the benefits, and some possible downfalls. So since that May 3rd presentation, staff has worked with the Planning Commission each month that they've held a meeting to devise a code, and that code is attached to your information for this evening. We've had two different developers come forward to the community development staff, asking about something similar to this. And while I don't want to redo the presentation from May, I do want to hit some of the highlights. So this would be an ordinance that would allow for diversity in developments. This would allow for residential and commercial to coexist, both at a small and possibly a larger scale. When you look at the city of Pullman, the west half of the city is largely devoid of any commercial opportunities, except for those along Grand Avenue. So this would be a mechanism to get those type of developments to our city and to allow for that flexibility that developers are really asking for. So we did hold a public hearing at the November 16th Planning Commission. There were no verbal or written testimony for or against this code, so the Planning Commission ultimately voted for a unanimous recommendation of approval for this code. During that meeting, we did go over some scenarios to try to apply certain situations to the code to see if it would work. And while it is nearly impossible to anticipate anything that may come our way, it does appear that this code is sufficient in implementing and going through the process of a planned unit development application. So with that, if there's any questions that I could answer the council, I'd be more than happy to take those.
Any questions? Yeah, Eileen.
I think some of the questions that might come up is, are there enough checks and balances within this to make sure we get what we feel the community deserves and that represents our values? And I think this does. I mean, it's kind of a close read, but there's several instances in there where this loops back through council, loops back through your department, and I think it's, I think this is good. And I really like the fact that it mentions in several places vehicular and pedestrian circulation, because that is so key to the quality of life and what people are looking for in a neighborhood and for walkability. So, and that's going to kind of ramp us up into the drive-through issue that's coming up, an item next. But I was really pleased to see the emphasis on that circulation, that accessibility, and the open space and walkability elements that are written right into the code. I really like that.
Yes. If I could add on to that for a moment, you're absolutely correct. This does add a nice layer or availability of walkable communities, which may not have necessarily existed before, where you have the opportunity for folks to walk to a corner market or a corner sandwich shop, where previously that just did not exist. And to answer your previous point about the way that we would process it, it almost exactly mirrors what we do for planned residential developments, which we've had three or four in the last three years, which the council, I'm sure, is familiar with those. So it almost mirrors that and it allows for a public comment. It goes to the Planning Commission, then ultimately to the city council for approval.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
I'd just also like to recognize the developers that were involved in this process in terms of stepping up, identifying a need, and being willing to work within, you know, the constraints that we may already have in place and take that to the next level. I think that's great. So thank you, the Planning Commission and them as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance number 22-26.
Second.
An ordinance creating.
Oh, sorry.
Go right ahead. No problem.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. An enthusiastic second to that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the next ordinance from RJ Lot. This is amending the city code, downtown drive-throughs.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, once again, council. Earlier this year, the council put this as a priority for 2022, taking a closer look at drive-throughs in the C2 business district. So on the map on the screen is the outline of the C2 business district. We've identified four drive-throughs, two which are in use and two which are not. The Banner Bank location and the Oasis Restaurant location are not in use. I did a presentation very similar to the one I mentioned, the previous item. This one was on September 27th. And once again, since that presentation, Planning Commission and staff has gone through this and discussed this. There was a public hearing held on November 16th. There were no comments or written for or against these changes. So when looking at these changes, the Planning Commission took the consensus of what the council was back in September, which was that those uses which are higher in intensity, such as those associated with a fast food or a coffee stand, prevent, or I should say, create a greater impact than those that are less intense, such as a pharmacy, or a dry cleaner, or a bank. So with that in mind, the Planning Commission and staff ultimately decided in splitting those into two categories. So with those high-intensity uses, primarily those associated with food service or eating establishments, which is in our use chart, which I'll get to in a minute, those two types of uses, which is predominantly, which would cause issues with walkability and traffic downtown, would require a conditional use permit as well as a traffic impact study. So that would allow city staff to analyze what kind of traffic impacts, especially those during peak business times, would have downtown, and would also allow the public to comment during a conditional use permit through the hearing examiner process. If I could, for just a moment, direct your attention to the use chart, and I apologize, this is a little, little hard to read, but it is in your packet. There we go. So it is hard to read, so I did take the liberty to circle. Under eating establishments, there is a, under the C2 zone, a new superscript of the number five, which may be a little bit hard to read, so I've circled it here. And then down below, under number five, we've added new language that says requires a conditional use permit and a traffic impact analysis in the C2 district, which is the downtown district, which was on the previous map. So there are no pending applications for a drive-through. I wanted to make that clear, that there are no applications. Nobody's come forward with a phone call or even an email inquiring about a new drive-through downtown. So I wanted to make that absolutely clear, that we're not, the staff isn't advocating that we're pulling the rug out from anybody that may want to come downtown. So I want to make that absolutely clear. So with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions of the city council.
Questions or comments? Eileen.
Yeah, do we have any kind of definition of? Excuse me. Do we have any definition of what higher use is, so we can attach some metrics to this, like vehicles per hour, or vehicles per hour between the hours of X and Y, or even just to use as an example, so the public clearly understands that we are on this concern. And this is something that, you know, has been made loud and clear to us as a council, that we're really going to zero in on this, we're going to make sure that we don't make a mistake, and that our code is written to keep it as clear as it can be, because that chart is kind of a bugger. So can you, can you illustrate or illuminate that a little bit for us?
Sure. That's a great question. So trying to anticipate what peak volume traffic would be, or average daily traffic, can be challenging based on the type of use, whether it's a, whether it's a chain coffee shop, or whether it's independently owned, can make a wide range of difference, whether there's indoor seating capacity, whether it's a double-lane drive-through, whether they're open early or open 24 hours. So trying to anticipate all of those variables would make it very difficult to say, or to create an equation that would say that this is a high-intensity use and this is not. So in that regard, we just went by use only. And so those associated with food and beverages, we thought were of high intensity in a generic sense, and then the other uses were lower. So that's why there isn't a average daily count or peak count associated with those things. It's would be very difficult to anticipate.
Yeah, thank you. That, I just want to make it clear to the public that we are aware of all these variables and that we have taken them into account. You all have taken this into account as this thing has been written, because there's been a couple of, there have been two opinion pieces in the paper in the last six weeks or so, that have emphatically stated that this was happening in the downtown. And there is no application. There is no.
There are no applications. Like I said, I haven't received any phone calls or emails. From a personal standpoint, my professional opinion, I should say, is that I think that if any new drive-throughs were to come to town, they would probably not look downtown. They would probably look along Grand or possibly Bishop, just based on the size of a lot that would be needed. It really aren't that big of lots downtown to have the capacity to create and to develop a drive-through system.
Great. Thanks.
Any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 22-27.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the next ordinance. It's the end of the year. It's time to amend the budget. And with that, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. We have two such items, and since there's a 2021-2022 budget versus a 2023-2024, we're going to take these in two chunks. So the first item in front of you is ordinance number 22-28, amending the original ordinance 20-11 for the adopted biennial budget of 2021 and 2022. So RCW does allow for the city council to find it in the best interest of the city to amend adopted budgets after the fact, as far as expenditures and revenues go, because recognizing those items, like in this case in July of 2020, what might actually handle by the end of '22 may change. So this is to true up the 2022 budget. Just go over some of the highlights on that really quick. Most of the revenue items are to recognize some large grants that we received. In the arterial streets fund, $930,000 to recognize Transportation Improvement Board funding, TIB. On the streets fund, again, $526,899 from TIB. And in the transit fund, $2,150,000 from the Federal Transportation Administration, the FTA. Also in the revenues, we're moving some money out of the general fund and into the arterial streets fund to cover the Project Downtown piece, $1,098,619 for all the work the Welch Comer's been doing. So when we receive those American Rescue Plan dollars in, they've been living in the general fund. And now that we've been expending them out, we want to show the revenue over here so we can show some expenditures on the other side, and I'll get to those in just a moment. In the actual ordinance, it goes through the full, you know, line by line on these. I just really wanted to hit the highlights for the viewing public, but if you want to dig deeper into the ordinance, they are all there. A few items in the general fund under expenses. The biggest one is under other governmental services. To recognize $1,043,342 from interest and principal payments on the bond fund. Remember, during the budget presentation, we had to separate out the principal and interest from the actual project fund, so we created that new 218 fund. And that's what this would do. Arterial Streets, again, that $1,098,000 for the expenditures for the Welch Comer work to date. Transit, the $1,315,000 to recognize additional grant funding for the electric bus that we received a little earlier than we anticipated. And then kind of one item that's a non-item, at the last meeting, when I brought back the amalgamated transportation union contract, I said I'd be bringing some budget amendments along with it. In 2022, we can actually accommodate those changes with the existing budget due to the low staffing in transits in particular. So there isn't one in 2022, but I'll have one in 2023 on the next item. So that's just a highlight of some housekeeping items on that. And so with that, staff does recommend that you adopt ordinance 22-28 as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, then do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we go to now the 23-24 biennial budget.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is ordinance 22-29, to amend the ordinance 22-25 for the 23-24 biennial budget. Very similar to the last item, but really, a lot of this is we're capturing work in progress on capital projects that we're going to get finished in 2022 and are rolling over. So these aren't a whole bunch of things we're trying to move in on you now that the budget has been. has been approved just two weeks ago. We checked with staff and said where are we at on certain projects, what's the balance left. So a lot of what you see in the ordinance with those little plus signs next to it will identify these rollover projects. So hitting the highlights on those as well, the finance department is in process of upgrading the software, so there's an additional $331,000 of that to continue on. For the law enforcement, we're worried about the timing on getting the billing for the radio study, so there's $57,633 that we're asking to roll over. And then fire and ambulance, we've had some supply chain issues, as you're going to hear a lot on the ones that go after this. So station one generator upgrade, hazmat trailers, an 11-month wait on those, rescue task force equipment, those items, $406,059. Street fund for fleet purchases, $38,000. The utility funds, a few projects that are in process, the sewer plan update, well eight control panel, the MNO expansion got shelved due to weather, we're looking to get those started again. The automated metering infrastructure, AMI, we're going to hear a lot about through the next year, because that's what's going to help us with the sprinkler controls, and watching what water's being used at what time. And then some fleet purchases in there as well. Utility capital projects, again, the AMI, the MNO expansion, and information systems, as you know, there's been huge delays in those, so we have a couple items that are, it's a timing issue, but we did get word that the 45 terabyte item shipped yesterday, so it is on its way, but they've already agreed to bill us in 2023. So that's part of this ask. And then the last two on transit, in the equipment rental division, you'll see in there that there is the post-budget contract settlement with ATU Local 1015, there's provisions in there for both units, the transit unit, and some of our ERD folks also belong to that bargaining unit, so we're asking for that to come over. So that's a nutshell on ordinance 22-29, we're asking for approval as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one as well.
Any questions? Ann?
Thank you. Mike, I just wanted to make a comment, that this is so clear and easy to understand, and I appreciate the transparency of, of everything that you're presenting to us, and so that everybody is aware that the funds are what's happening at every step of the way, so thank you.
Okay, with that, do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt number 22-29.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five is an ordinance, and this one here is dealing with city offices, business hours, and again, Mike Urban.
Thank you. So ordinance 22-30 is trying to make a change to an unintended consequence. So according to ordinance 1-08-100, it reads that all city offices shall be kept open for the transaction of business between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday of each week excluding legal holidays. What that doesn't allow for is, in case of inclement weather, or emergency, or all-staff training, that if we wanted to attend all that, somebody would have to stay at City Hall and make sure that it was up to transact business. To take it to the worst degree, if City Hall was burning down around us, somebody would have to stay here and transact business, or risk this ordinance. So staff is proposing a small change to add after the excluding holidays, to allow, in case emergencies or other times as approved by the mayor, such as inclement weather, staff training, et cetera. So it just gives an opportunity to, if we've sent everybody home for something, somebody doesn't have to lag behind by themselves, and they risk whatever we sent everybody else home from, in case of such emergencies as deemed by the mayor. So we're asking for the amendment to the chapter through ordinance 22-30, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? I can remember when the roof blew off, we were wondering how finance was going to handle that, and these are things that do happen at any building, so we wanted to make sure we have a little flexibility on this thing.
And we stayed till 5:00 that night.
Yes, we did, yeah, it was here, yes. So do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance number 22-30.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Art Guro now comes to the podium, and deals with some electric vehicle issues.
All right, let me get this. Sorry about the delay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I bring ordinance number 22-31 to you for consideration. The proposed ordinance establishes rules and regulations allowing public use of city-owned electric vehicle charging stations. Currently, the city has four charging stations, one is at the old City Hall, and three of them are outside this building, City Hall. The proposed ordinance and the city's commitment to using alternative fuels in place of fossil fuels has several benefits, including reduced greenhouse gas emissions, reduced reliance on foreign fossil fuels, and it encourages economic growth. In addition, it is consistent with the city, the comprehensive plan goal to provide and maintain high-quality, timely, and cost-effective services. Public use also increases the utilizations of the city's charging stations, which at this point isn't really great, because they're only being used for city vehicles, and we really only have one vehicle that can connect to it, so we'll hope at that. It also provides a revenue stream to cover the operation, maintenance, and replacement costs of the charging stations. The next two slides provide an overview of the proposed ordinance, and the overview, after the overview, I'll take questions. For those watching on YouTube, the agenda, including this item, is available on goboarddocs.com, sorry. Section one of the-- I went too far, sorry about that. Section one of the proposed ordinance adds a new chapter to chapter 18, or adds a new chapter, and that is chapter 18, to the existing Title 12 entitled Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Section two of the ordinance, 12-18-020, provides definitions for electric vehicles, non-electric vehicles, electric vehicle charging station, and electric vehicle, or an electric vehicle parking space. It'll, the types of electric vehicles that it addresses, there's basically four types to address. The first is a battery electric vehicle, which gets 100% of its power from a battery onboard. You have a plug-in hybrid electric vehicle, and that's what the currently city owns, it's a Prius plug-in hybrid, and it gets, it's got an onboard gas engine, and then it's also got a battery onboard. The next type is called neighborhood, or network electric vehicle, no, it's neighborhood electric vehicle. And these are vehicles, electric vehicles, that don't travel any more than 25 miles per hour, and short commute kind of a thing, and they have a little less range than, say, a full battery-operated electric vehicle. And then the medium-speed electric vehicle, which is any electric vehicle that can travel over 25 miles, and 20, but not, but can't go faster than 35 miles an hour. I was really intrigued by the networks, so if you get a chance to look at that online, I think the city should go to those, some of them even look like skateboard, it's kind of interesting. Section three establishes that no person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle other than an electric vehicle within any space marked, or signed, reserved for electric vehicle parking while charging only, and--
You might want to advance your slide there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to doing this kind of stuff. There we go. Okay, thank you. And it also provides, it makes it unlawful to park or permit an electric vehicle in a space with electric vehicle signage, while it's not being parked, okay, or not being charged, I'm sorry. It provides that electric vehicles may be parked in any other space, so assuming that that space, there's no other restrictions on the space that would prohibit that vehicle from being parked there. And then, and then so, section four, wait a minute, I went the wrong way, what's going on here? I apologize.
You got to the money right away, though.
What's that?
You got to the money right away. I understand that.
That's right, you got there, I got there too fast, I apologize. Section four provides the council the authority to set rates by resolution, which is, unfortunately I failed that a little bit too soon, so you've kind of seen what we're going to propose in the next one. Section five is the violations, and provides violations and penalties. And then section six establishes that all remaining provisions of the Pullman City Code, of the Pullman City Code shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect upon passage. Section seven establishes the effective date, if adopted, as five days after publication. With that, staff recommends city council approval of ordinance, of the ordinance, of ordinance number 22-31 as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Any questions? Francis?
My question I have is, since we're defining electric vehicle, that there's a lot of different electric vehicles that are not necessarily roadworthy, this is only related to the use of the charging stations, this would not change, make any changes, this is really to our attorney, this wouldn't make any changes to our rules of the road, or the rules of the sidewalk, or our rules to the trails.
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
Becky?
I have a question about the penalty for, the five cents a minute penalty for staying after. I was just wondering, on really busy weekends, graduation comes to mind, since it was very recent, I mean, that's like $3 an hour, I just wonder, and with a $15 max, I just wonder if that would, if I were driving an electric car, I might look at that and think, that is very cheap parking, that was taken into consideration, I assume.
Yeah, one of the things, that's also covered, covered in the RCW. It is, the RCW states that if you park in an electric vehicle's space and you're not charging, that's a $120 fee right there. Okay, so that kind of takes care of that, this is just to incentivize people to move the vehicle without being, you know, too heavy-handed with that? I guess that's the way.
Now, if this would be airline pricing for those big weekends, we could jack that price up big time, you know, like, okay, it's a holiday weekend, just like the motels and everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, want to get your car charged? Guess what, yeah. But see, we're sticking with the RCW, thank you very much, okay. Any other questions?
We're not proposing any rate increases for the weekend.
Okay. If there are no questions, do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance 22-31.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, now we're going to find the fee schedule, which is your next one.
All right, next slide, okay. Come on. So the fee schedule that we're proposing is listed on the slide here. Staff recommends a three-component fee structure that includes rates for electricity, a connection fee, and a post-connection fee. A detailed analysis of the anticipated revenues and expenses provided the basis for the proposed fees and the staff's recommendation. A memorandum included in the public agenda item on board docs provides specific details regarding the projected costs and revenues, and the assumptions of the analysis. I'm not planning to go into great detail about that, I just want to kind of hit the highlights of that, because I think it's important to provide context to how we came up with the rates, and I think it's necessary and just transparent to the public. Anyway, the revenue sources, so we'll start with revenues, the revenue sources, there's really two, and I got to advance my slide. This is really slow, okay. There's two revenue sources that I'm dealing with. Number one is the revenue from the sale of electricity, and for the first year, 2023, that's, all these numbers that are on the slides will be first-year numbers. The revenue for that is projected to be about $1,400, $1,400, and a connection chart, and the other revenue stream is connection charges, which are slated at $6,166. There's a, there's a big assumption made here, and that assumption is how the utilization of the charging stations, and, you know, not having any data really on our, on this location, you know, at times, it's really hard to set something like that. So basically, I just came up, looked at what, what, you know, what would be available, and so I set aside time, I basically used the time of the daytime hours between business hours, was what I used, and then I said, okay, what percent of that would do, would be, that would be used, and right now I'm at 30%. And I think that's doable, but, you know, time will tell, and we'll maybe have to adjust rates as we go forward based on real, real data that we accumulate. So that, that's one thing I want to point out, that's, that is the assumption. Now, as far as cost projections, the cost, there's a few more. The electricity, the cost of electricity for that same, for that 30% utilization is about $600. City administration and maintenance costs are about $960. ChargePoint fees, ChargePoint is the company that collects the fees, they also advertise, they have an app that you actually use with our charging stations that gives you access to it, and so people can go there and they see all the ChargePoint, or even some of that aren't ChargePoint on their app. So it's, it's kind of a marketing kind of a part of that, too. And then, then we have the sales tax that we have to pay for the sale of electricity. The assumption, again, here is the utilization, so these numbers are consistent with the previous numbers that we use for revenues, 30% utilization, and just, you know, the estimated, you know, the memorandum goes into detail, if you guys, on that memorandum, it goes into detail that, you know, I'm projecting very minimal time to maintain this, you know, six, six to eight hours a year. And again, as we get better numbers, we'll be able to fine-tune that and come up with a better projection for that, and revise. Starting to figure it out, this ain't me. Okay, there you go. Okay, so in closing, I just kind of wanted to give you, I did a projection that basically said, based on the cost that we're charging, and kind of the, the published, you know, how much energy it takes to get so far, for an average, for an average electric vehicle, the estimated e-miles per gallon, and e-miles, the e-miles per gallon, or the electric miles per gallon, is the cost of drive, of driving an electric vehicle 100 miles. So they don't have miles per gallon, it's more like miles for 100, or, yeah, miles, or electricity for 100 miles. So that would be 5.8 hours, or $5, sorry, $5.80 per 100 miles. Yeah, so that's, I think that's pretty reasonable, and a good place to-- Yeah, so that's, I think that's pretty reasonable and a good place to start. And, you know, there's other, there's other charging stations, there's about 25 charging stations in, in Pullman. And that, you know, I looked across the board to see where we're at, and specifically looked at Brelsford, which is operated by Vista, and they charge $0.35 plus a $0.5 fee. There's a lot of them that are free, okay? But what, what you can't get to when they're published as free, you can't get to, they're, you know, they're, they're paying for that cost somewhere, they got some revenue stream that's going to maintain those. It could be WSU, for example, it could be that they, they include that in their parking fees, their parking passes, but there's another funding source. So I used Brelsford, Brelsford's as a model for rates. With that, that brings us to the end, and I'd just say that the, the staff recommends the adoption of the resolution as presented, and I'm also available, able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on this one? Okay, Francis?
Thank you for this. So, just as a recap, how many charging stations does a city own?
Four.
So we just have the four here.
We have three here, and the fourth one is at the old city hall, in the parking underneath the city hall.
And our fee structure is just for here, not for city hall, not for the old city hall?
That is correct.
The memorandum, I mean, that's what the memorandum states, is this memorandum outlines recommendation for the, for the four charging stations at new city hall. It doesn't reference.
Okay. I misspoke, I'm sorry.
So, so the old city hall would not be one that someone could publicly charge at?
It's a different company, ChargePoint. It has the capability, its network has the capability to do that. We've never done that, it was, it was purchased as, with the, with the hybrid Prius, when that was Kevin Gartis's staff car, and that's why it was installed there.
So, but the public can't use that to charge, it's a different company, they, they had an app?
It won't work on the ChargePoint.
Okay. It won't work on ChargePoint?
It won't, it's not a ChargePoint, it's not one listed on that, there. And it's available, but it would be, it wouldn't, as far as I know, and I talked to Paul Kimmel about this the other day, as far as I know, we would not be able to set that up for charges, that would have to go through Vista. That, that's, that's the caveat, it's a, it was really, it was donated to the city by a Vista.
I see, okay.
And so it truly is an Vista charging station on city property.
Okay. And then, on, on your map, you list one in Military Hills Park, is that controlled then by the school district, as opposed to us?
Yeah, those 25 stations are just listed on that map, are all over the city owned by different people, different, it's not, that's not all ChargePoint, that's, so it could be that that school, would be my guess, I didn't, I didn't go and look at all the sites. I just wanted to give some context of the number of sites we have in town. But the four we have are three here, and one at the city hall that pertain to this charge. Transit has two big ones they use to charge the buses, but that's their ChargePoint, but we're not going to utilize those for public use.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have, in terms of curiosity, we have huge generators here to run city hall. And if there is a major power outage, those generators only take care of city hall, they will not take care of these charging stations, because I could just see a major power outage and people coming over there. Because these are, we have emergency outlets throughout our building to cover us, and our recreation building, because we also have that as a, as an emergency shelter, that's all it covers, it will not cover these, these charging stations.
Actually, Mayor, I, I'm not sure of that, I believe that to be the case, but I, I didn't look at the inbound wiring from the charging stations, you know, they're, they're integral to the wiring within this building, they're not on separate meters or anything like that. But my guess is that that's correct, and I can find that out for sure, and the council know.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Motion to adopt R-74-22.
Second.
Moving second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to the next resolution, this one here deals with RH2 Engineering, Clayton Foreman.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I have a short presentation prepared tonight on the item before you, which, as the Mayor indicated, is an engineering services agreement with RH2 Engineering for a general sewer plan update and a comprehensive stormwater management plan. So the general sewer plan is a comprehensive plan for the city sewer system, and as a city who provides sewer service, we are required to have a general sewer plan, and that plan needs to meet all of the requirements of Washington Administrative Code, WAC 173-240-050. Also, that plan must be reviewed and approved by the Washington State Department of Ecology. So on the screen here, you'll see a copy of our current plan. Our current general sewer plan update is dated 2010, and to provide some context, the previous update prior to 2010 was done in 1999, so about 11 years between those two updates. And so really, we feel like now is a great time to go ahead and update our general sewer plan. And it's going to provide us an evaluation of our system over those last 12 years, there's been a lot of growth in the city. It will also provide us some consistency with our current comprehensive plan, and the growth projections for the city, as well as a roadmap for the next 20 years, to address future improvements and growth. Moving on to the comprehensive stormwater management plan, and that's a plan that looks at our stormwater system and our infrastructure and our program. As you know, the stormwater program's relatively a young program, it was created, the division was created in 2007, when the city was issued our first Phase II municipal permit. Subsequently, in 2007, the first implementation plan was created for the stormwater program, and then in 2009, it was amended, and that was the time when the actual utility was created. So that was created in 2009, and that, those documents have not been updated since that time. So again, we feel like now's a good time. In the meantime, we've been through three permit cycles since that 2009 timeframe, and of course, with each new permit cycle, you're looking at some new regulations and requirements. So now's a good time to take a look at that stormwater program. We really want to emphasize program compliance with our current Phase II permit, and we want to look ahead to the upcoming Phase II permit, which is expected to be released in the summer of 2024. This plan will also, again, like with the sewer plan, it will look at our current comprehensive plan and dovetail that in. Look at future growth and improvements on the horizon, and any modifications that might be necessary to our stormwater program, to make sure that we're addressing those changing regulations that we expect with the next permit cycle. So in order to start this process, we've got the two master plans, we realized internally that there would be some efficiencies to combine, to combine both master plans into one project. And so what we did is we developed a request for qualifications, and we sent that out, we published that July 16th, with proposals due on August 17th, and we received six proposals from various firms. And the next step then was to evaluate those proposals with a five-person selection committee. And basically, we pared that down from six to three firms, and we invited them in for presentations and a short Q and A, and that was on September 27th. At the culmination of that process, a few days later, the selection committee selected RH2 Engineering as the most qualified firm. And then, of course, we started talking with RH2 on the scope and the budget for this project. That was an iterative, iterative process, just wrapped up last week, actually, and this full scope of work and the budget is included in your council packet, it's Exhibit A to the engineering services agreement. The fee for the general sewer plan update is a not-to-exceed amount of $297,876. And for the stormwater plan, not to exceed as well, $203,252. And these figures do fall within the approved budget, and they are in line with industry standards for this type of work. They do take a considerable amount of time and effort to prepare, and the timeframe is estimated to take 18 months from beginning to end. So we're looking at a completion date in July of 2024, followed with council, council presentations, of course. So in closing, staff seeks council's authorization to move forward with the engineering services agreement for this sewer and stormwater master plan updates, and I would be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
Move to approve resolution R-75-22.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Wayne Thompson is up next, we're going to talk about a resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement pickup truck with snowplow blade for Pullman Transit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have a presentation for the screen. The resolution before you will allow us to replace a 24-year-old two-wheel-drive pickup truck with a newer four-wheel-drive truck with a snowplow blade. This truck is used, has been, and will continue to be used almost exclusively by our Transit Bus Washing team. They need it to access bus stops and shelters throughout town year-round, where they do minor maintenance and cleaning, they empty the trash cans at the shelters, mow lawns and remove snow, and the more powerful four-wheel-drive truck with a plow will let them do that year-round, not so much by hand or, or push plow. It'll also give us the opportunity to clean out some of the bus pullouts that might otherwise require a second pass, return trip by a snowplow. Our reserves are, are healthy and designed to, to cover costs like this without the assistance of grants for small vehicle replacements, it's not like a bus purchase where we go out and, and apply for assistance. We've had this project, replacement project on our CIP list since 2019, and I would have been here before you at, at that time, if it weren't for the budget and supply chain issues that arose in March 2020, we were actually that close, ready to place the order at that time. So, in summary, we want to replace a 1998 two-wheel-drive pickup truck with a new four-wheel-drive truck and associated snowplow blade for use by our Transit Bus Washing team. Happy to answer any questions.
You haven't been moving snow with a two-wheel drive, have you?
No.
I suppose, I was wondering, I just want to make sure that was clear to the public. Eileen?
Well, yeah, sort of along the same vein, you and I have talked before about keeping those bus stops clear, and that's been a, well, there's been some internal union act things that were kind of getting in the way of that, but not having a proper piece of equipment can always, you know, always stall the process off. And now that you guys, I was really pleased to see this item finally bubble up to the top, and yeah, this is going to make you guys' lives a lot easier, and for our riders on our transit system to have those things clear, so they can get in and out of there with their groceries and their baby strollers, and yeah, this is a great, great use of these funds, thank you for pushing this forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt R-76-22.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, item number 10, authorize staff to purchase a new 3/4 ton 4x4 pickup with a up-fitted for utility box to replace something much older. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Yes, this quote is for, a proposal for a new vehicle for ERD, they currently have one of the oldest vehicles we have in the fleet, and though they've kept it running for over 30 years, it's time for us to, to put it to rest.
It was a point of pride for ERD to keep that truck that old and keep it going.
Well, you know what they call it? It's, its nickname is Arvis, in honor of Chris Arvis, that worked for us. So this truck is used for daily operations for ERD staff, especially, it is, this one is designed to allow them to go out and address issues on the road, so it's designed with a box, a utility box on the back, so they have tool, the tools and supplies they need to address emergencies such as breakdowns, oil spills, and, and different things like that, and be able to do it safely. So, we are, we are using a source flow contract that meets, that has been publicly bid and meets procurement policies. This was added to the 2023 CIP and approved in the 2023 budget, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't see any questions coming, do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
It's the new 3/4 ton 4x4 pickup truck.
Thank you.
Upfitted with utility box to replace 90-048. That's the one, okay, do I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 11, Ryan again, this time we're moving up to a 1.5 ton 4x4.
Thank you, yes, this is a vehicle that is, has been proposed for wastewater treatment plant, this is a new vehicle that was proposed in the 2022 CIP, and it was budgeted in 2022, this is the first opportunity we've had to actually order this vehicle. So we have funds budgeted in 2023 for it, however, in the interim of when we got initial quotes, when staff got initial quotes in 2021, to this point, we've far exceeded our initial budget estimate for this vehicle. This will come out of a wastewater treatment fund ultimately, and we're, we're confident in that the fund can, can take that overage in budget, but we will propose a amendment at the, towards the end of 2023, as needed, to cover that additional expense. So currently, we have 120,000, 25,000 budgeted, the total, the vehicle total will be 165,292. Again, this is a sourceful contract, meets public or city policy, procurement policy. And I guess there, there is another issue with this vehicle, also the transit vehicle, and the vehicle I just proposed previous to this, is that currently the market is so demanding for vehicles, we're, we're very hopeful that we'll get these vehicles, but Ford has an allotment system in place, and so we'll put in our orders, and we're hopeful that we'll get them, but Ford may end up saying, we, we don't get all the allocation that we, we hope for, so if that happens, we'll try again next year for all of these vehicles that we're, we're going for. So, any questions I can answer?
Do you have to wait a whole year? I mean, if you, if they- I mean, if you, if they can't deliver, because this is something we need, would, can you go and like, okay, we, you had three months to get this together? You can go back and try and go for another product?
We could. It's, the, the market is, you know, in the past, we, we had large windows when we can order vehicles. Now that the timeframe is so short that we basically have to jump on them when we can. And so it'll probably be next year this time again, where we'll have a two-week window when they'll say we can put in orders and we'll put in our bid for as many as we can get that, you know, and just hope for the best. But yeah, it's very frustrating at times to be buying vehicles. Did I answer your question, I guess? I don't know.
Somewhat, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? With that, do I hear a motion on this? Item number eleven.
I most authorized staff to purchase a new one and a half ton four-by-four pickup upfitted with the utility box and crane.
Second?
Since the window is open, we've got to move. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is one of the council goals, a number of years. Try and take care of staff and make sure staff will stay with us. And with that, Mike Urban on the COLAs.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Council. Before you tonight is a recommendation from staff for a cost of living wage adjustment for nonrepresented staff effective January first, 2023. So during the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget process, a cost of living adjustment wasn't included because we were under a salary survey from an independent third-party group. That finally got launched in May of 2022 with an expected completion day of ninety days. We actually didn't get a draft report until right before Thanksgiving. So it was not able to be incorporated in that. And since we've received that draft report and I've been working on analyzing that with our HR generalist, we're needing some follow-up discussions with the third party, fill in some holes, try to get a better answer on some specific items. We do have an appointment scheduled this Friday to continue our work on that based on their availability. So what we did is we, we analyzed the item that we had. And I created a memo that we sent out. It's included as part of your packet. But I sent it over on December first for the Mayor and City Council, where it outlines the history of COLAs in the city for the last eight years against the one, two, three, four, five, six bargaining units. And to this point, there's a couple to be determined on 2023. The library did take their vote last week, so we will be bringing that contract to you. They took the vote on Thursday. So we'll be bringing that contract to you on the tenth. And Public Works, have they voted yet? I know we. Okay. So. So we do have a tentative agreement with them and we expect their vote shortly. So as you can see, we're nonrepresented to stack up against some of the other bargained units there in that table on the first page. So what we're looking at here is eighty-seven individuals that are not part of a bargaining unit in our city staff. And as you break that down, several of them belong in the enterprise funds, which are the utilities and transit. There's the general fund staff and then as well as a couple of inter-fund folks like IT, for instance. So that's where they draw those dollars. So based on the information that we were provided in some of the historical, staff is recommending a four and a half percent COLA for nonrepresentatives to bring us closer into parity. Because some of the things we learned on the study is overall, the study had determined that on average, current pay is fourteen point six percent below the market minimum paid to be competitive. And what we learned is that's the average. There's some positions that are farther behind and some positions that are much closer. And that's the most important thing I'm trying to identify right now with our third-party, independent third-party. Another item is they talked about many cities and counties are concerned about having market competitive pay given the tighter labor market. I believe Whitman County, you were with me the other night. I think they're doing a six percent COLA. I'd want to verify that, but I believe that's what we were told by one of the county commissioners. And again, the implicit price deflator, what we use to set property tax rates was six point.